Jen was gonna be here tonight. She was. She was gonna be here tonight, but she said it depended on how her little one.
So we. A lot of crowding. Crowding, sorting. And it's a time where you're talking about. Right. Okay, so. Uh, as the. There are four.
There she is.
Mommy.
Yeah.
Do you want to like discuss first? We put the three euro avenue. Which is the garage. The accessory building, which is interesting since we of course spend a lot of time dealing with an accessory. For this is a very different kind of accessory building since it already is very much defined as garage. I looked at it and was the. I don't know. What do you think? I mean.
Yeah, so on this one, you've got the. You know, two pieces of it. First one being interpretation, which you obviously discussed before the experience portion of it. And here we're being asked to interpret two terms that are already clearly defined in the zoning code, so I'm not really sure. It's an appropriate situation for an interpretation. Because it's already typically an interpretation would be, you know, your zoning code, you're in a section that says like timber or ridge line. So it said the ridge line, but it's not defined. It's a term what exactly is the ridge lines? Look at other definitions. Um, plain language, things like that, or words. I mean, we've got accessories built in for structure, which is in the code and then dwelling unit. Also is defined clearly in the code, so it's not like there's rare terms meaning. But I mean, as far as the use variance goes. The application doesn't really have anything regarding. The kind of what tends to be the most important factor, which would be the financials. So we would need to have the applicant come back and bring. You know, the impact, what other potential. Correct, yeah. And it can't just be more expensive. That wouldn't, that really wouldn't fit the criteria or test for a use variance.
And it's a garage, I would ask. But they're kind of accessory building. What does it mean?
A accessory structure by code definition from my standpoint is anything incidental or accessory to the house. Garage, shed, poolhouse, gazebo. Uh, what else?
He's up the grand old school.
Correct, yeah. So the actual definition of code for accessory use building or structure is a building structure. Clearly incidental or subordinated principal building structure. Or used and located on the same lot, such principal building, structure or use. Um, here we do have. An actual definition for garage as well, which is enclosed space for storage of one or more motive vehicles, provided that no business occupation or services conducted for profit there. And as far as accessory use goes, typically with the definition or seeing the code, I can pass the definitions around. I just, I don't see how additional rooms for the house, which pertains to the actual primary use would, you know, underfold in that definition. Then then.
So you should, you know, the garage. Would be a candidate for. Fashion, that was rather not good. Attached garage. But it can't be a residence. That you're right, because it's not the part of everybody. That's for you.
Look, so attached garages, yeah, attached, no, attached garages. Are considered part of the house essentially. And you can, or you can convert a garage into living space if it's connected to the main dwelling. But connected to the main dwelling is where, where some people, some people have taken it. To an extreme. I know a guy who connected two buildings that were. Three hundred feet away. Yeah, in enclosed walkway. He said it was connected. It's not.
That.
Yeah, that's the difference. They're asking if it doesn't have a kitchen, then doesn't make it, make it a dwelling.
So it means it's only a, a sleeping room because.
Correct. Correct.
There will be the bathroom. That's the key. Okay, so that's one of the. One of the pieces.
If it was considered a, if it was considered a, a dwelling. Or what the ICC calls a, an ADU, accessory dwelling unit, which isn't passed by New York State yet. Uh, it's only adopted, I think, at one city. It was adopted by one Syracuse or somewhere has adopted the ADUs. Uh, it wouldn't go, it would go against our zoning because it would allow two families essentially, two family on a single piece of property. In other words, we're zoned for single family residents.
Especially if they want to burn that table into a red, that's where they want. He wants to get the garage, make it another. They can't.
No.
That's a morass and it's a, I'm single. Right, yeah.
Correct, yeah. So it caused an issue there as well. But I just, uh, I mean, obviously we can discuss. I don't know if anyone has the thoughts on the interpretation piece of this. I think the definitions are pretty clear, so I'm just not really sure whether we can parse through that language to find other meaning, other than.
Yeah, I mean, it's, uh, it's, it's obviously had. Something in mind. Hoping to promote that, something in mind. The question really is, what are they wanting to know? Right, just, just a, a definition that's, I'm not giving, I don't. Because it's within the context of what they're asking, right?
Yeah, I mean, as far as the interpretation of how the definitions would apply to a specific section of the code. Is sort of.
Hey, so in the research that I was doing, every dwelling accessory dwelling unit, sort of like a guest house, lot speed or something like that, like. They all pertain to that, right? It all has to do with that. Every accessory structure has to do like sheds, garages, anything like that, like the New York State code. It's pretty explicit, all right? So the interpretation's asking, if, if there's no kitchen, still a dwelling and dwelling literally means sleeping. It means.
Yeah, we're thinking a little. In the garage. So when you have, Greg, when you have thirty-one feet between. Structures.
For fire. Yes.
How far is this?
So this house and garage are pre-existing prior to that. So let me, let me, let me just run, let me, let me just, I'll, I'll, I'll tell the board how the fire separations work for the town of Fallsburg, so you're aware of the situation. So, uh. Fire separation by New York State is based on ISO regulations. ISO stand, ISO is an abbreviation. For, I'm not sure what it's abbreviated for, but has to do with the amount of water flow there is. Pressure, fire hydrants, whatever, for, to put out a fire. The, the better water flow you have, your municipality has through the fire hydrants is. Actually, there's a chart tells you how close you can build your structures together by this, this water flow calculation. Uh, so. Our town decided to adopt their own personal, uh. Fire separation. And it only applies to our developments, bungalow colonies. It doesn't apply to single family homes. And that separation was thirty-one feet. And what they, what they wrote in the fires, and that's written into all our specific zoning for our developments, bungalow colonies, camps, thirty-one foot separation. If you can prove you have significant fire, fire flow, which is the ISO, uh, if there's fire hydrants available and there's good water flow. You can reduce that thirty-one feet down to twenty-five feet separation between buildings. And the only thing allowed in that twenty-five foot separation. Is open decks of five feet. In other words, so it always maintains a fifteen foot clear pathway for fire services to, to battle the fires at fire spring. That was a, a local law that was sent to the state. I guess the state has to approve a local law. Is that how that works? The, the, I think you, you, the town can create a more restrictive local law and then it has to be sent to audinate. They approve it, then it's voted in. We did a public hearing on it and it was voted in. So we have this restriction. When it comes to a single family residence, you're allowed to build. Uh, a garage if it's, if it's disconnected from your house. Believe it or not, you can build it ten feet away. If it's, it's either ten feet or nothing. It either has to be, either has to be connected. So the fire's separated or ten feet away. So this place, it's, it's a, yeah, so this, if this was to become a, a guest suite or whatever you want to call it, it would be, it. Wouldn't really fall in anything we have. It was, it's not a garage anymore. So. But it would fall into that accessory structure of ten feet away. I believe the building is, I didn't go out and measure it, uh. It's, it's how far away from the house? You know?
More than.
Okay, so. Oh. It's Alice. We know Alice, don't we? Uh, so, yeah. Uh. If it was attached to the house, if it was attached to the house and it was part of the house, it probably wouldn't be an issue. It would have to comply if they did renovate it into bedrooms. It would have to comply with all the building codes of two thousand twenty. Uh, it'd have to be insulated properly, fire, uh, you know, smoke detectors and all that stuff, but it, it would be. It would have to be. Part of the house. It would have to be one structure with the house.
They said, yeah, I don't know. Um, but they also said in the application that they wanted to make it, in, they wanted to prefer it to be. Um, the garage because it would be more costly in terms to the neighbors for them to do the renovation on the house. And I'm not clear if they even thought the, the space of the setbacks.
Yeah, I didn't check any of that. I, I, I didn't, I didn't dive into options. Which, which we, we can, we can, this isn't a back and forth yet, so you'll, you'll get your chance on the spotlight, but. Yeah, so we didn't, we didn't discuss options yet on that. We're just gonna see first if he can, I guess, if he can get approved.
So the real question is, can I have a space for residential?
Correct. And if you did grant the use var, if you did grant the use various for tonight. You know, it, it would be, you know, he'd have to, the applicant would have to prove. All the criteria to make it. Eligible.
You build a treehouse.
We have no other governing over treehouses.
So you can sleep in it.
You can build a treehouse if you like, in your backyard. I can't say nothing. No, that's different. Playhouse, treehouse, playsets, anything like that are on you. They, they're not governed by the. Building code. You wanna move on? We're running out of time. All right.
Yeah, we've got some questions to ask.
So. If you want me to talk about the Riverside one next, since we're going backwards, uh, let me give you the backstory on Riverside. Riverside is a. Okay, I'll, I'll make it quick. Riverside is a bungalow colony on Route forty-two. Uh, the applicant had come in to. Do an addition on the house. It did meet the twenty-five percent increase of the unit. Uh, the only problem with the addition is. Is it ended up being, when they started building it, it ended up, I had noticed that it was too close to the building next door. Uh, so. I sent one of my inspectors out to put a stop work order on it, not realizing one of my other inspectors wrote a permit for it. So it wasn't somebody built something without permission or without a permit. It was a. Oversight on one of my inspectors and, uh, the applicant already started building it and. Now. His only choice was to come to the zoning board to make, cut the addition, cut it back. Or, or come to the board and ask for a, a variance request. Uh, he's asking for. Little under three foot of a reduction except, or three foot, three and change feet, oh no, four, four and change feet. It's twenty-five, from twenty-five to twenty foot four. Uh, and we've done that before by instituting fire, two-hour fire separations. Uh, which, which would conform to the fire separation code if they did some. Special sheeting and some fireproof insulation within that twenty-five feet area. So, uh. I, I just couldn't let it pass on my, on my. It has to come to the board to, to be made right. And the deck. The deck thing is, the deck is gonna end up being fourteen foot ten. But we don't really have it a specific code. That's only gonna be two inches short. So that twenty-five foot rule I set, and we can only build within five feet of each building, which leaves fifteen foot clear. So that means the deck has to be fifteen feet away from the other structure and it measures when the deck is, the deck to the structure is now. Fourteen foot ten, so it's a couple inches short. Uh, but the deck is tremendously lower than the house if you were standing there visualizing, so there's no chance the deck is gonna. Jump fire from one unit to the other, so, uh. This is a hardship created by, by department. Which we, we are all human, uh, so, uh. You know, uh, it's here to the board to. To discuss it and talk about it, and that's where that one's at. Sure.
Really quick rundown of Irvington Estates. This one, we're gonna have to, yeah, pick one back. Uh, it's a bungalow colony, so it's not conforming bungalow colony. Even though there's three, um, variances being sawed or area variances. Because it's not conforming or treated as a variance. Uh, so the application was through the scope of area variances for. Of the overall degree, uh, however, they need to go through the actual test for a use variance. And the thought is that. For New York State, the case law is clear that non-conforming usage or something that needs to be extinguished rather than extended. Um, so we would need for this one, just updated applications. For the use variances rather than area variances. That's. I think they're. Pretty big asks anyway to start with, but it's gonna be a much higher standard. Um, so why is it not?
Yeah, so.
Let's come back.
So, so Irvington Estates is considered a bungalow colony and as far back as I can see. Doing the research, it's always been governed under those, those bungalow colonies. Uh, I don't know exactly the year it was built or, uh. Or whatever, but it falls into that. It falls into that criteria with the twenty-five percent expansion of the units. Uh, the, it's gotta comply to the new fire separation requirements that we have in place now with the, the twenty-five foot between buildings. Uh, and. Uh, it doesn't comply to, to a few of these items. Uh, and we have treated the, we have treated the. The, some of these asks in the past with the area variances. But we've learned, we've learned now, we've been. There was a couple, yes. So there was a, there was a prior case where, uh, a variance was granted for one of these additions, not that long ago, I think, a couple of years ago. But it was, it didn't have, it wasn't, it didn't have any building separation issues. It didn't have, it, it, it only had one of the. It had like one or two of the conditions here. This has a cou, this has a couple more, uh. Couple more pieces to it, so there's more pieces to this one.
Yeah, and as far as, since January first, the first year, or any of the two, three times that have drawn out to the county review. On any non-conforming use, they've been coming back as denied by the county because they wanna see a use variance review rather than an area variant. So they've been rejecting it just based on the applications.
Will we talk about this tonight? Will we hear about it, Tom?
Uh, I think it's worth just, you know, letting the applicant explain what they're doing, but then we'll have to kick it out to the next meeting, uh. For any, to make any decisions, to, to get a proper application that walked through and so the applicant has time to pull financial data and all that together.
Okay, right, now we're, we started. All right, yeah, all right. Um, we're in the middle. Um, being very. Water, soil. Do you have the name here?
Trying to get it.
Yeah, all right, so as we, we draw to order now the heat of the, uh. The one over here, which is the ACO two thousand point four. Uh, we are aware that all applications have to be United American based on. Dental codes, the DCO and other law of their patents. And any who would be given a refunding board that's prepared, guaranteed to water or sewage programs. Uh, due to the current, the extent, the stance on both the water and sewage systems. Which were discussed in May ninth, on, on to all water and sewage. An extension application will be accepted and denied based on the then existing facts and circumstances. Each application may be connected to extensions to the town of Fallsburg Water and Sewer Systems. Will include review by the engineer and will be guided by the town engineer's expertise and knowledge. Of the town's water and sewage systems, public health issues, safety and welfare, and the publicly available water and sewage systems. Uh, information that is posted in Department of Public Works, the public field. And, uh. Okay, so that covers that. Um. The, uh, minutes, minutes of the last. Meeting.
Did you guys get minutes?
I did get them, I looked at them.
I will check, I will check with, uh, I will check with Jen where the minute status is, right? Did you get any five of the minutes or no?
Some from yesterday or. For everything. All right, so if we can only do those, uh. Minutes are in the base.
We can hold the minutes off for next, next month, right? Let's say that we read them.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
So what is.
We, uh, consider. Weeks ahead and then we will take that for approval in the next meeting. Um, so then, uh, yeah, they're coming through.
They did?
All the business, we're kind of all business, we're big business. And, uh, Leah represented, representing these four, uh, items is, uh, Mr. Atiya. Uh, and so, um, why don't you do the presentation? Can you introduce yourself?
Give me my info. There, that means, I have to communicate. Um, I recognize that originally a human variance was admitted and you then was evacuated as a.
It was Jen, it was Jen. This, so, so we had, we had, uh, when, when, there was some confusion to this. So in the past, we have taken these applications as area variances. Uh, we were, we were informed to us from the county, I guess it was the county, right? The county needed to see these uses under use variances. Uh, we had already, we had already asked you to refile that application. Uh, under the area variance. So it is partially, uh, we, he did file them originally and Jen had him re. Resubmit them. I believe.
Okay, yeah, I mean, that's. I think at the end of the day, on this one. You would be here for a couple meetings anyway, so I mean, I think we're gonna adhere from you to open the public meeting. Uh, and then if you have a chance to provide the financial data and things, so if you have any. If you have any. Yeah, if there's any information, uh, you wanna provide to the board, just so we have it and then. Just amend the application for the next meeting.
I mean, we can, we can talk about it like it's a, a, a use variance. We'll just, we'll just amend the. You know, we can, she can't vote on it tonight, but we can amend the, we can, we can amend it to, to, to say it's a use variance, I would say.
Yeah, it's fine. We'll leave the public hearing open to state case.
Okay.
More public at the next meeting, uh, once there's notice of the use variance, right, within the next six, so. That'll be fine.
Irvington Estates is a non-conforming bungalow colony, this is not a bungalow colony, um. Seven five. Yeah, the square feet in total. The, it's at thirty-two point nine. Back in two twenty twenty, around six inches, where the extension was granted. There is a very, very, uh, thirty point three, thirty point nine. Um. I know there is nowhere else to build extension, there's nowhere else. No other people have placed. That is for, uh. Of reserves, as they want to have. The house and. For all the parents or the. Yeah, the parents, not the eight, to be taken out of parents. Um. Is not near any, we're going one hundred forty-five feet away from. Near a garden. Um, regardless of where for the twenty-five percent. Where the increase of the building, the building itself is.
Sorry, do I shoot, is that the.
Yes. Yeah. You got, I'm sure, it's okay. Do you have a copy of that with you tonight? You wanna grab that either, oh, easy. We'll move the easel up for you. I'm sorry, I should have done that before the meeting. Just lift up, lift up the center, Deb, Deb, just, all right. You're gonna fold right up, easy.
Regardless of the one variant, the twenty-five percent increase, the ability to rent our, said twenty-two. Twenty-five square feet, which don't have twenty percent, it went out of my grasp. However, there was a building permit denied for it because the unit is eleven hundred square feet. That's a unit, how much square feet is duplex right now? Two downs in the unit, I'm not supposed by building or by the.
Unit size. It's a duplex, so you're going, you can only use a square footage of the unit. It's not the whole building, just the unit itself.
That's a twenty percent. Right, and about that. Um, we've always made up a five square meters, if I can separate it, to have her. Try with the rating.
So between the building, between the building, the new structure and the unit next door, you're sixteen. Sixteen feet away, sixteen, sixteen and a half feet, sixteen point five feet. Okay.
That must be made much, the area, the neighbor has the same center.
Is that the same seventy by eighty?
The same. Center.
Me fifty-four?
Number.
There's fire hydrants here, so they have fire hydrants, they can reduce to twenty-five. So. So that's one of the variances, that's an area variance he's asking for tonight. And that's the reduction from twenty-five feet down to sixteen and a half feet.
On the building permit denial, there's only two, um, there was the left part of the place and one of us, the twenty-five percent per coverage. Um, the sixty point five was not on the. Denial.
But we put it, you put it onto the variance, you're correct. Yes. Yes. It should have been on the denial there also.
The, um, what would it, what would the extension, if it were the ones, yes, in the twenty-five percentage?
It would be a little bit shorter than. Would be a few shorter than.
Okay, this is basically, they do?
Yeah. They pre-um, the bedroom and that we. Now, there's a deck, that's. I believe there's a bedroom, one bedroom, one bathroom, the. I believe there's a bedroom, one bedroom, one bathroom, the section. And just one bedroom, one bathroom.
Yeah, I mean, it would be great if you could give us the exact figures from what would be the twenty-five percent increase, what it would be if the level, the level growth. And that'd be great.
Then how about, um?
Yeah, like what would the situation would be, that was actually important.
I'm just curious, would it make a difference if he builds the, breaking out?
Another unit. Two units. So, so that you're looking at, you're looking at half a duplex unit. So the, the, uh, the neighbors, the other hit, like if he was to move it away to make it compliant, yes, it would be better, but it wouldn't be behind his unit that. So.
Where can you put it?
For, for his unit, he has no other options. No, so this is really, if, if, if they were to add addition to this specific unit, that is the only place it can go.
What?
That's fine. Thank you.
What protection does the?
Uh, you mean if we grant them, if we grant the variance?
Yeah.
So the fire protection that, that the fire, that we, we make them do for the under twenty-five feet is a two-hour fire rate of construction. Which means anything within that, within that twenty-five foot, below twenty-five foot separation has fire retarded sheeting, fire retarded insulation, and fire retarded drywall inside. So if that unit was to catch on fire, it would help contain the fire inside the unit. And if the unit next door was to catch on fire, it would help shield the unit from catching on fire on the outside. Those are the, that's what we do with the two hour.
We can share and request. What are the rights?
Well, there's a firewall between duplexes. There, there's.
But what are the rights of? Yeah, well, that's, I, I.
But obviously, I mean, I don't.
I'm talking about, like, you know, mostly, and, you know, at the. Right, there, uh.
That's not.
They have to show up, kind of, the hearing and, you know, what's her issue, silences out there. But what are they supposed to do?
So did you do the mailing for this? Are they, did you return them back to us? I have, I have, all right, yeah. So no, I think, you notice the, there's, there's one ownership, I believe Irvington Estates is, is single ownership. It's a condo type setup, which means it's one owner. So he doesn't need to notify every house in there. He notifies just the, just the board and the board is supposed to notify all the residents.
One thing I'll say about the, the point of making sure that the attorney were knows is that in, uh, in the documentation, the numbers on the map are different from the way that is in the directory numbered on the ground. So remembering that fifty-six is the corner unit, and so I thought that it was a standard building, but it's fast, and it's three doors down, there's actually already construction happening in that building.
That is correct. Um, this is actually number sixty. Over there, uh, I didn't want to put number sixty and.
Well, yeah, I think it's more so for the application in the future and so that numbers of the fellow people investigate and come and speak to themselves. And I mean, what you can ensure that those two things are same. And so if you just make sure that if you do resubmit the application, that the numbers are also as they appear, um, for somebody who's walking and wants to investigate this.
So I missed, I missed that for a second. Number, the number of.
So it was like number fifty-six.
Okay, is the unit we're talking about.
Only fifty-six on the map. You are walking through the complex, seven six. So there's no way of knowing that it's unit number fifty-six unless we're getting this.
Why is there no schedule?
Yeah, well.
Quite funny when the other. I don't know where to look. You know, maybe.
And to this, for the, for the, that would be great. And then also there were some sort of happening on that unit, what I was talking about, and I'm just wanting to make sure that there's already, like.
Is there renovations being done to the unit? Interior renovations, maybe, for that unit? Okay.
Um, I consider those exactly. Um, it is a bunch of old people, like that, that is primarily. No, it is primarily, I would say seventies and above, but so most of the, their children are looking over. And I feel like if you could do it, then you could do it. I need to do it. And by the end of the day, like I already know like four extensions that are there. Um, I think, that's, I think like this one here. Um, but yes, like this one.
Do you, is there any, maybe more, like, bits from living?
Um.
Achieve?
Yes, but no. Because everybody there walks either, well, they're all cool, very well. So it's either their nanny sleeping in the front room or an age, like their elderly parents. Does it get their home movie? Yeah.
I mean, there's, there's, they're going after two, so four. It's like, if it's four now, so the, uh, set of parents from leaving in, how are they going to send their, um, set of larger?
I would think you something that they're gonna have to, for example, the rent or.
What's your coach say about, uh, that, uh?
About. If you need a handicap ramp? Extends where? I'm sorry, I was looking for the code, for the permit. You need a, you should have a permit for a handicap, yes.
Let's say they're not playing. Do they need one?
No. You, you only need a handicap ramp on a residential home if you need it for, for a disabled person. And then you're allowed to. Yes, yes, mandatory, mandatory, yes, on commercial, on a new business. If you, but if you're renovating an existing, if you're renovating an existing store over fifty percent, then you're gonna have to bring everything up to ADA compliance. So if you only renovate twenty-five percent of your store, you don't have to bring everything up to ADA compliance. But if somebody wants a permit for a house, a ramp for a house, yes, they can put one up, yes.
But I just, I didn't finish, and you couldn't help me.
Okay.
I have one word.
And I end up getting into a lot of there, and I'm actually like, well, he's a, he's a, but now there's no space for me to build, that I also want to build, so maybe I do, like, that'll come back for us in the months.
I'm like, it's like, uh, still the, it goes to the point. And that point goes to the point of master plans, we've asked for, for other bungalow communities. So I don't know how we would say yes to this bungalow community, but no to other bungalows communities. I think we need to ensure that there's a reason or a sense of what are the plans of additional, uh, things before there's any conversation.
Well, we're seeing where there's a generation shift. And so that it, these are properties that are going to be, or are going to transfer to the next generation, the next generation based depending on family size. And this will be like a hot hatch. Unless we have, we have some kind of, uh, way of forecasting how many people are looking at the properties. Um, you know, and even the demographics unknown to us, to how many people are heavily versus younger, and that would help also to kind of be able to forecast how soon we are going to have this tsunami of requests.
The problem here is, the problem here from my standpoint is, it's fifteen percent lot coverage is what the max is. They are already existing at thirty, they're, they're already double their lot coverage. So if they were to do some kind of master plan, they would need to come for a use variance for the entire property, ask for an extension lot coverage, I believe. Which would be a, a huge ask because they've already, and they didn't do it, it's not like they slowly crept up on their lot coverage. They, they, they built this place out under no zoning standards or, or under no zoning. We set those lot coverage calculations somewhere further down when they did the comprehensive plan, the zoning for the town, so, uh.
Yeah, that's, the thing in mind is, is that even though it's twenty-one, not percentage points, we're still looking at it in fifteen. So it'd be fifteen percent, so not looking at doubling it, it's not looking at twenty or thirty-two point nine to thirty-three. So I mean, that shows you're, you're more than, so it's certainly a substantial ask in that regard.
Maybe the next one?
Um, public area, on this one? Well, yeah, there's a public.
Are we opening it up?
Yes.
For, for the next meeting?
No, we're gonna open it up for the speech.
Yeah.
So let's leave, welcome out.
Yeah, I think what I. I wanna come on here, uh, and, uh, for bringing up for the fact of master plans that have been discussed by this board, this board, uh, for quite some time now to try to, um, um, certainly, it was my duty to give it to you. By just writing this. And those of you who are new to the board, I think actually is to take a look at Scott's development. And what we've seen over the last twenty years, fifteen, twenty years that I know of. Every single year, somebody from Scott's country board this board, and it's for me, it's for them. And when you send out the notices, nobody gets to notice it. We just had one a year or two ago, we're kind of building an entire building without a permit. And the town had to solve that by allowing the building to stay, for the law clearly said it should have been going down that. Thank you for the children. So I say this, this board with all due respect, spend some time on this following the H and other colleagues. There's one to open that door. If we do this, there's one more time, I'm not gonna do it. Thank you.
Anybody from the public on Zoom, raise your hand. There's a little raise your hand button. And I'll unmute you. No, Molly's raising her hand. No, there's people watching. All right, you can move on to the next one. We're gonna leave it open, I guess.
I don't really need this one open. Um. The words go by. Um, okay, so the next one is, um, Riverside. I'm gonna have a here for the request of the area, area variances. Want to reduce the twenty-five foot separation between.
Foot port.
Four, uh, for the two seventy-seven square foot addition. And reduce to the twenty-five foot separation for the, yeah.
That's not written right. I'm sorry. That's supposed to be from fifteen foot to fourteen foot ten. We make correction on that. That's, it's fifteen foot.
Reduce fifteen, fourteen one?
The deck, that's for the, for the extent of deck. It should have been fifteen to fourteen ten.
So the twenty-five after the word reduce is really fifteen?
Yes. So the second request is to reduce the separation from the building to the deck from the required fifteen feet to fourteen foot ten. I don't know how, uh, I overlooked that when Jen typed it up. Uh?
A missing, the, 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 the.
The, the big, the big, the, the. The big thing was the, uh, was the, was the separation between the units.
And you're, this is not bungalow, this is not, individual houses in a.
So this was a, now this is still called Riverside Bungalow. It's still Riverside Bungalow Colony. Uh, they did come with a, they did come with a somewhat master plan. Years ago, they had a fire here. Uh, there was nineteen units that went down. There was, it was two bungalow colonies side by side. It was one of the reasons for our building se- separation requirements. We lost on a windy day. Leaves, the caretaker was burning some leaves, caught one building on fire, and it took out nineteen or twenty buildings between two colonies. Because the buildings were only separated by ten feet apart. They were all, uh, open underneath and the fire just jumped from one to the other. So, uh, what we do now is all our new construction on these bungalows and stuff, we close the bottoms in. This way their traveling leaves can't blow under to ignite. Uh, we do, uh, we do some other things with the bungalows. So this place came before the planning board with a half phased project where they did one side of the development where all the units burnt down. And then they left phase two, which was the opposite side where all these older units still are. So it's half a new place and half an old place. So. It's still considered a bungalow, yes. It's, it's, the new ones are still considered non-conforming. Uh, but they allowed them to use by more modern units and they gave them also the option to do all new modern units on the other side. If they, if they were financially able to. No, the, 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 the new side, the one side of this development is all brand new units. Uh, they didn't keep them the same size. No, they, they went and got variances and stuff to, it was a hardship and they, they were able to build like six or eight brand new duplexes right down.
Add enough, they did not add enough or?
They didn't create more units. They, they kept the new.
Way you were.
Correct.
Their own genes and, uh, and then they're. And so that was sort of, I think, my, it was, I don't know if you're motivated, and how, so, you know, so, with it, with the fact that we, too. And obviously, you want, you want to look like a Kedon. Uh, we don't have public promotions.
Those nuts.
Where they, it was not documented. But, but there, there was a very big push. They came from them. Their argument was, look, why not do anything different? We're just replacing. And we have no grand design to go beyond or over and above what it is important. Just want to get back on cat. That's the history of that, you know, um, that how it's fun.
I don't know what much more than that yet.
Yeah, I'm trying to comment if this, uh, the fifth in, it's within twenty-five.
It is. We, we, I did it in my office. The addition was twenty-five percent of the, so that is also, unit thirty is also a, a duplex unit. There's two halves to it. All right, let me pull out the folder here. I did. Yeah, I believe I checked the map on that. The, the addition was, uh, within the twenty-five percent.
Whether it's a century years ago, I don't know.
Yeah, there was, there was an extension years and years ago on the rear of twenty-seven. And then more recently, there was an extension on twenty-seven, uh, on the front corner. Correct.
And just to confirm, are we, so we're talking about this in terms, like, terms of both maps of what it would be for a bungalow colony, not just residential area?
Correct.
Yeah, and I asked that question on the total size, so we have three hundred seventy-seven feet for the addition that's going in to twenty-one. Thirty-six is the total size of the unit. That's seventeen point six percent increase, so I'm not, well, bungalow units, that's five percent. So we're not in a situation where not, where it's being defended, wherever it's, it fits with the criteria to increase by twenty-five percent, but it's too close to another. To clarify that, um, 'cause I, I wasn't aware of the math.
That's good.
That's exactly my point that I was saying with the other colonies. Uh, as we said, yeah, so what, like, to twenty-seven meter extension, that's not in most states for thirty to be there.
And I hate to admit it, but this is also an error by my part. It was, it was a, it was a, it was a, it was a permit that was granted by, by one of my inspectors that, uh, wasn't measured properly. It wasn't, he wasn't. Wasn't measured properly. It wasn't, he wasn't misled. It was just, it wasn't, it wasn't checked properly. We have certain checks and balances and we get busy in our office. It was overlooked.
Your debt is a hundred.
The, the unit, yo, go ahead, you say.
Now, listen, I almost put it down. I mean, if you move into that other open corner, there's no handle at this point. I mean, there's an open corner where you can square that. And put it definitely.
Um, I'm sorry.
I got the side.
Yeah. Um, that is when the foundation, the, they already material there, uh, this might have started down now, the, the job for the material and and they can.
Yeah.
No, no, no. They, they had already started building it. They had already started building it. I was driving by.
Oh, with the.
I was. I was driving by. It had a permit. It had a permit, but I saw that it was too close. Just, I, I'm pretty good at visually seeing things. Uh, I didn't know it had a permit on. In other words, when I was driving by, I was just dri- I was coming from another job, I was coming by. I was like, boy, that looks like it's off close to the other unit. I sent one of my other inspectors back. I said, please go over there, measure it, stop it. We'll sort out what's going on. So.
Yes. You're saying with the unit twenty seven going back to that first second.
Yes.
When that unit was built, that, did that have fire in the wall?
No.
Okay.
No.
So if you do, if you do consider, the other thing consider danger that poses twenty seven because it doesn't have fire.
Well, that's why the two hour fi- we would, if you were to grant a variance tonight on the reduction in the setback. We would require any construction within the twenty five foot separation have a two hour fire rated construction.
So that, well, that equals that, you were twenty seven, there goes that, uh, is being wrong in this.
No, no, no. The, the, you don't have to, you don't have to fire rate the building next to it as long as you fire rate your unit.
Right.
It's fire rated. It's assembly designed to work both ways. It's, it's keep the fire in, we'll keep the fire out.
Okay, so in fact, well, it's usually.
So I had a discussion with the builder and you could probably, the discussion with the builder, he's willing to do the fire rating. As necessary at his cost. In other words, he, you know, he's, if you guys approve it, he'll do the, he'll do the, the required two hour fire separations for me.
Required.
It is required, yes.
That is part of the application. So I would recommend a caution of the word size that it wants to include this. Criteria for there is the condition to be that fire proofing, fireproof walls, all that are provided too. But more point, what is that road? Campbell Road is. I don't know. I haven't seen Campbell Road, but we can touch the dead.
That's walk right.
Yeah, it, it's right off of two, forty two. Diagonal, yeah, pretty much.
Is it, is it five hundred feet?
Oh, interesting.
Well, you know, my, it should is.
Yeah.
And if, if I have to be of the, yes, the person.
The other question, when I was there, the deck was not actually in line. The deck for unit thirty, for unit thirty. Uh, like twenty, so it was, it was like a foot or two further. It looked a little bit like Franklin's sign. Where if you are standing, I mean, I, I was getting a probe, I can obviously tell that the deck extends out past the end of this stuff. It's not flush, thank you. And so I'm curious, what is this map, uh, I've heard it or what? Cause it, it would be a conclusion if they just make it.
So I stopped it. I allowed them. So when they, when I stopped them, they left. They were continuing to build, but they were staying away from the, the, they cut the whole corner, they didn't cut the corner off. They didn't finish building the corner that was the twenty five feet. In other words, I couldn't allow, they were like, can we continue? Cause they were renovating the whole unit inside out. They were renovating the whole thing. They were like, can we continue to build it, close it in within that, as long as we stayed without the twenty five feet? And I allowed them to keep working because they, they had already, they already started. They were already into the whole project. It's just that if you drive by, you'll see the corners missing. Maybe that's why it looks like sticking out.
No, it, it like the, the, the full deck, like the full front of the deck extends past the other deck.
The side of the building?
Sorry.
I have pictures.
Yeah, it basically like. This part of the deck is not actually flush with it. It extends like a foot or two out past this part of the deck. Past part, past unit thirty's part of the deck.
Oh, but that doesn't affect the separation, I don't think. Separation's towards the, towards twenty seven.
It doesn't affect the, um. It wouldn't, yeah, it would affect the separation because twenty seven is the part with the flush deck.
I want the picture here.
Working, it does get away an angle that you would otherwise fail to use for in an emergency. You have something done now. It was definitely. The diagonal.
Yeah, exactly.
Here, I have a picture. Come get it. Meet you halfway.
Here.
You're coming that way? So. This is standing, this is the front of the deck.
Yes. What I'm saying is that.
This is sticking out this way.
It's sticking out this way further than the, than the deck that it's connected to is sticking out. And so if it were back a little bit, then it would actually be a little bit more space.
Still the same distance this way though.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
This way, even by bringing it back, I see what you're saying. It sticks out past the front of the deck. It's extended out the whole way.
Exactly.
But it's, it's, even if they cut that back, it's still gonna be, this, this picture doesn't, this, this picture really doesn't line up very well. This old site plan is perfect, Jen.
Yeah.
So it's saying, this is the unit one of seven. This is the corner. This is, this corner is the twenty four, where it's not bringing in, is that truly within the twenty five feet? Because they just need to bring, what we're asking for is for the, for the building out of this corner. And it's worth it. It's, it's this corner. It's just, there are one things that the definition.
Okay.
But it almost, it just went back. If they cut off their corner, but then it's gonna have to fill their whole layout.
Oh, they have a kitchen already ordered, everything else.
And it's the corner of the unit. And it's gonna look funny if the building is spot on or on a diagonal. So that's the separation, you know, it's twenty foot forward off. But there's fire rate this whole side and we're much lower, like the deck, like I said, the deck is way down here and it's only two inches short of that seven.
Okay, the deck is gonna jet out this far.
The jet comes out, the jet comes out this far. So the deck is further away, as it comes out, the deck is further away. This is the closest, closest point of the deck, the structure is at this point. Then it comes away. So it's only two inches short, and it almost is like, well.
Yes, correct.
Just for the record, if you want to blame you for showing, to back everyone online.
Oh, yeah. How do I do that? Can you, can you?
Close that. But then, yeah, and then you just distract it and then you, you can turn that face hurt that and just put it in file.
Okay. What is that, make a huge?
And then you have to show the audience.
Yeah, yeah.
Notice the, the one that we're using that fits too close to the shoot. Like you just moved that.
On yourself on that.
In other words, it's only this little guy. I see, it's a very small, it's a small, it's a very small uh. It's even that one square foot.
Yeah.
It's just a very small, I can see where the triangle missing, where they create a wall. That's the only part to me. Not a huge, it's not a huge.
They can't just like be all working shape?
I don't think they know that.
I mean, then they would have got the thing of the foundation.
I think that's there.
I don't think it is.
And because there's. Um, oversight to. Alright, uh, what was the comment? Have you said everything you want to say? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Alright, and I want to compliment Greg for taking the decision taken on this board. By admitting that uh, the actual amount of people in your department that are given things and interstate. And he being the bigger given being has opted to correct all of that by taking the necessary legal steps to protect this kind of money for what he did. The leading of the community and so that, so I would ask for the, I'm getting some.
Anybody on line would like to speak, raise your hand.
What happened when you went over to George? You came back and started to flip with the.
About the application too, is that there were a couple of issues on the application that made it also again, it's confusing for the best state. So for example, on this page, the short environmental assessment form, it doesn't refer that it's going to be a minimum of three fifty four. So had the other address, like they, like the typical score is how to do their homework and, and, and I didn't sit in Tennessee and know that like you wanted to.
Uh, I appreciate that. I hope it's.
No, it's.
So this is that, before we go to take time. Would you still be two years? I don't know. I think in ten years, you'll only be four years.
So, so Moish, Moish is, is new to this. If you've noticed, you've seen Moish at a lot of our town meetings and he comes in and asks a lot of questions and he, he's been very involved in our. He's been paying attention what's been going on. So uh, he's going to be, he's learning through this process like we are. So uh.
So you, you really can go on many perspectives. Yeah, we do need the two thirty nine so that they have up to thirty days to be sending it. So we're gonna, we're only about to send it out. So the sooner you send it out, better. So there will be an answer or no answer about the next week. Um, so I would recommend keeping the public hearing open. Um, and then at the next meeting, um, any questions that pop up, we'll see what the two thirty nine says and we'll go from there. Uh, the people are moving in a good direction. We just not really. Well, yeah. And now we require our, they don't. No. Yeah, I was gonna say, once uh, once we're done with this one for Irvington Estates, it's within that fifty five hundred foot threshold down under the state road. So you're gonna require a two thirty nine for that too. So just wanna put that.
So this, I mean, we, we're, we're learning how to do these processes a hundred percent correctly now too. So the, the public hearing should be called, the applicant should come to the meeting, then a public hearing should be scheduled. And then the two thirty, if the two thirty nines needed, it should be called for at that first meeting. And then, you know, it, it's gonna make our processes a little bit longer. There's gonna be two meetings for every hearing. But that's the way we have to do it to, to properly.
Be compliant.
Be compliant and follow all the. Yes, so uh. We were hoping to try to resolve some of these issues tonight, but we can't because of the, the two thirty nine uh.
Yeah, it's not a production idea. That's, that's. That's in general municipal law.
Yes.
The whole point is they want to see inter municipal uh, togetherness and making sure everyone's aware. So that's the thought process I had there. So the, we have anyone else in, uh, public that wants to speak? Is there any?
Um, I already asked, nobody came on, so.
Came in? Alright, so this one is not open here. We're not open. And we'll leave it to two thirty nine and then we'll take the next step. But those can do that right now. And now we move to Mrs. Van. Get the door out of there.
Anyone else want to add here? Something, Sarah, I want. Um, with the question for our application regards to what that we would use that's that they're talking for. Um, as the code defined, the bottom two, that's this place that has a kitchen and that place has a bedroom, kitchen and. As how the code is find the, the dwelling unit, um, this will not be considered a dwelling unit part of the code and. If we were to find the code, it would be considered, except for just that it cannot be a dwelling unit in itself. So being that. I, I, I believe it's um, gonna be considered.
You're saying that, of course it doesn't have kitchen. You have to think about it's not like dwelling. It's a dwelling unit that has a definition. Uh, you become of the residential picture, correct?
And that, that, the code.
But like this, this is not dwelling, it is a accessory. So now, what, what do you see the definition of accessory?
That three structure, code does that it's um, structured, the use of which is incidental to that presidential building, so financing premises. Um, the way I understand this is that building that cannot has no use standing in itself. Building that shut, you have no, there's no use, there's storage, there's no structure there or office, because to have office in there, there's no use. Office technically would have the dwelling unit, the property. Um, so there will be no use of the, of this. Accessory structure without the dwelling unit there as they cannot physically, according to the code, it cannot work in their, their, like how. They need to have kitchen, that's good.
So, so these units are just dwelling, it's a little conjunction primary.
Yes.
Okay, but you know, let the unit from one that. Then I have bigger. Alright, this is.
Now you're doing the challenge.
So what's it gonna be used for?
None, uh, sleeping, sleeping, there's gonna be.
You, you, the sleeping is not well.
That, that's the way I understand it from the code. Um, we have chairs and just beds and it's counted the way the code is meant, it's impossible to within it by itself. It's not considered a dwelling unit the way. The way it's intended. So applicant wants to use, the owner wants to use this as a place that has kids come over and. Just actual bedroom where they can sleep for weekends, they can eat by hand, they can be part of everything they have to, just place them to sleep.
They're not living there for that?
They're not, no, nobody will be living there all time. It's just a place that. Actually guests come over, eat by hand for um, the night and.
Well, that's where it has, you know, that's, that is, that is some of the useful side.
Yeah.
There's none, yeah, yeah. You have to consider, you know, it's maximal potential. Which means that down it goes. This is gonna be their all. This is running that way. Is it, is it, this is exceptional, does it have a need?
They're gonna have to put in heat, they're gonna have to have some heat rest. It's going to be.
So if I have either my bird. It's like a residential. Or it's probably.
Not dwelling unit, uh, as the, that place that they can sleep, we will speak. Put a kitchen and then it will make a dwelling unit, which is not allowed.
And we'll, and we'll have a bathroom.
Correct.
Yes, if this use is granted, it will continue with the property regardless of the owner. So there's the chance that whoever lives there in the future then has the opportunity to make it into a more controlling unit and or have it as a short term property, like the, the.
In fact, you could just create that well of the extension to the house. We cannot because it's detached from the house, it's.
Yeah.
We're there. Right, so. Unless you wanna pick it up and somehow connect it, that's between you and your. But in fact, why, so really it's, he just wants to use it as an easier or inexpensive way. Because then he's doing it, extras connected to the house would probably be a lot more costly.
Yes.
Okay.
That makes sense.
The name, the background.
So you're saying, uh, the only people that will sleep, you're saying part time sleepers are children?
It's, there's the reason why it's building it is for those children.
How old are these people?
Married, married, because. I don't know, but they have young kids.
So bunk beds, stacked beds in the house.
All have to, no, married couple.
No, no guarantee.
There is no guarantee it's gonna be sleeping in it and.
We can, uh, you know. These things, once you grab them, you're hoping to every possible.
Um, just to answer what I said before about adding a kitchen there, that's like that co enforcement is. It's on top of and co enforcement will give the protection to do that. If the name might, anything else in the house.
Assuming that Greg and people are gonna get all the legal people to go and knock on the door.
You go in fact, the kitchen. Of security, right?
And then it would.
It doesn't have a stove.
If it doesn't have a stove, so you can have, you can have a, in your basement, you can, if you have a finished basement, you can have a counter, refrigerator, uh, uh, sink, everything. You just can't have a second needs a cooking. Once you add a sec, one way like a stove, no, uh, so a stove, if you put a stove in your basement, kitchen or counter set up, then it's considered a second kitchen. Then it's considered a separate dwelling.
Right.
So we've, we've been challenged on, on, because of, because of religious beliefs, there are kosher kitchens. But we, we, we allow two kitchens on the same floor. In other words, like if you wanna do a passover kitchen or kosher kitchen, do it on the wall on the same, on the main level, on, on, on the same level. If you, once you make two separate areas, like two different levels of your house that have two, two separate dwelling units, all the, all the components of two dwelling units, it can be considered a two-family house at that point. So. Oh, we got knocked out. So, uh, I mean, you have options. I mean, you could connect the garage to the house. You could file for, you could, you could, if you weren't random variance, you could, there are other alternatives. It would have to be more than a breezeway. It would have to be, uh, a conditioned space, uh, connecting the two buildings, uh, with all of the fire separations. So you wouldn't have to leave the house to go outside to go back in another section of the house essentially. Uh, that is, and then the garage would have to comply to all the, the, uh, regardless, regardless, if the garage does get converted by a variance, it's still gonna have to meet all the energy codes and all the stuff like that.
And I think the other question is, what are the families' opportunities to build on the property and what they extend the house structure, the nature of it?
So they do have, um, we were gonna discuss that when we get to the variance part of it.
And who are going to be interpreting that?
I, I don't know.
Yeah, I think, uh, it probably makes sense to, uh, deal with the interpretations first and then depending on what the, you know, the interpretation is something that allows you to perform without variance. Um, and I think just to be clear, uh, we've gotten the definition of accessory structure, which is different than what I'm seeing.
Um, this one, uh, I, I included, uh, one of the best, one of my hits.
Okay, yes, if you go to the zoning code three ten two point two, um, you've got accessory use building or structure, the definition there is building structure or use clearly incidental or subordinate to the principal building structure or use located on the same lot with such a principal building structure use. And I think if you were looking at that, that's a bit problematic here because I guess a garage with bedrooms is not incidental, rather it's an extension of what's going on in the primary unit. I'm gonna move to this section quick now, but that's just, uh, this is important.
According to the main, the main building.
Even it's, yeah.
Uh, office for, um, property maintenance office that can have an accessory structure that would also kind of be, which the code states that it had, um, that would kind of also be incidental to the property and I believe the following is.
My priority of the garage.
Office that we could, with the current thing, I believe the code says that we could have an office in the range of top over code, we says could have the office and accessory structure.
Yeah, so if we go to section one fifty-six, it's accessory use, it does have a definition of use occupancy or tendency customarily incidental to the primary of occupancy of the residential building, such accessory uses may include, among others, the following. So they've got offices for the building management, dining rooms, banquet rooms, public kitchens and ballrooms, recreation and playrooms, laundries for the use of tenants and occupants and a connection with the management and operation of a residential building, maintenance and workshops, storage rooms for living, bedding, furniture, supplies, tenants, equipment and effects, rooms or space for incidental sale or display of merchandise to occupants and tenants, such as newspaper, candy and cigar stands. And the final one is for objects within a residential building or on the premises thereof used primarily for the storage of passenger tight and more than residence. Have you seen?
Bunk bedrooms.
But it's that. I'm on top of the person, you have to sleep in an office, sure. That definitely might not be. I don't know what would be, it cannot be considered dwelling because the script is a dwelling. And. Or the kitchen is a dwelling, but.
Well, that's what we, we put in a, you know, like, you're embarrassed, when you are.
Yeah, I certainly think here, again, even with this definition, it's a structure incidental to that, the residential building. So disconnected bedrooms aren't incidental, they're going exactly to primary. So I, I think that's what the problem lies in considering this a accessory structure. But I don't get a vote, that's, you know, we're in a.
Yeah, I'm saying honestly, I'm. I guess going with that, of course, because I think there's definitely other things, including general to, uh, for. But this is, that can be, I think, no in regards to the, the, having dwell, if you wanted to dwell, it's, it's that make that connection and somehow they can, it's primary, anything over that.
You wanna word it in a way, you wanna.
You know, we don't have a, for a garage.
Absolutely. And so the Oxford Dictionary, one of the things that we do in an interpretation, the dictionary, dictionary says dwelling, the definition of a dwelling is a house apartment for other places, residents.
But.
Given that you're taking a large apartment, it is a, it is a dwelling unit.
I think, well, first, the thing is, now you're saying it's for their kids, when they're paying and whatever. No, like, it's pretty much the same thing as sleeping by the name, you're like in the middle of the meal, you're running outside. However far it is in the winter, in the summer, screening fall to go check on your sleeping kit, like you're not gonna leave babies and stuff in, they sleeping all alone. I mean, we hope it's safe up here, especially on a final week.
Month of the year. I don't know. Who is concerned, I think, as far as your decisions, but yes, allow for accessory use, uh, seating boards. Into the drawing, to turn, to sleep for, you gotta, uh, you know, build it up a bit more and, and, and really have a big continuity because of state agencies, I, I, the we could end up with garage bedroom arrangements, this would be towards us. This area where everyone's looking for extra sleeping space. So I, I, we're not against people having beds, but let them have beds in houses.
It basically nits your head in the backyard or, you know, the treehouse.
So, so, so the trend is, so the trend is now, just so, so the zoning board is aware, the families that are buying the houses in our area now are very large families. They do need additional space. We issue permits all the time for attached garages to turn them into living space. It, it's a total legal thing to do. You can, if you have a, if somebody has a house, buys a house and has a two-car garage attached to the house, you can take out the garage door, condition the space and turn it to your. Like so. Correct. So, so. So that's what I'm saying. So what I'm saying is if it was attached, it wouldn't be an issue, but now, yes, so.
Chopped and rented to your house, your attached garage.
Correct.
There's also the issue of parking, you gotta rent a garage.
Well, I don't know, where do you address that issue?
This house has enough park.
Yeah, so, yeah. But in general, that is the problem.
We would never issue a permit to somebody to convert their garage into the living space if there was no place for them to park. That was the only place on the property to park their cars. Like if, if, if park, if eliminating the parking in the garage would create an issue where the cars had to be parked on a street, we would deny it.
Well, that's happening a lot with three people.
Yes.
So I just said that part of, you know. With the number three.
We have seen their interpretation, but it is a dwelling unit.
If that's what your, your interpretation is gonna say, it's, it's either accessory dwelling would not include a bedroom and a bathroom. It would be this, right? I, I don't think, you have that in a word, illegal, but of course.
We were asked to interpret it, I think the point is, does this use, uh, apply to dwelling unit or just apply to accessory structure? So based on that, I got it down just real quick that for a dwelling unit, the theoretical answer could be for the interpretation that dwelling unit would not include an unattached garage with bedrooms and a bathroom, but without a kitchen. To keep it specific to this vast, and then for accessory structure, accessory structure does not include an unattached garage with bedrooms and a bathroom, which is the same use as the primary residential use of the, um, so the question that's into that, that.
You can be the first one.
Yeah, my hand, it really tightens. I can't register that. Um, so dwelling unit would not include an unattached garage with bedrooms and a bathroom without a kitchen. So I think based on the definition, kitchen is, that basically dwelling, and here is the kitchen, so it wouldn't fit that definition. So when you call it that. An accessory.
It's an accessory and it's a, about this.
I don't think we've proved anywhere in our conversation tonight that the accessory can be used as a, I mean.
Yeah, I think based on one fifty-six dash six, which, um, I mean, it's, it does say other things, but I mean, the definitions incidental, I think are important too. Um, is that what you, I, I was, I know you have a definition.
I, I'm working my help duty, I'm not sure what I'm saying.
Okay, yeah, so I, you know, this, that's a definition is being likely to pursue as a chance for minor consequences bearing in mind there, which is a current source, if you look at the end of the word, incidental, that's not applying to code. Uh, or occurring merely by chance or without intention or without intention.
Office to that description?
But office is whispered in the, uh, so we're trying to, we're trying to say, office doesn't support apply, it's, you know, one fifty-six doesn't really say an office would fit that definition.
When an office is not, that is a different time, in terms of use, um, it's, it's better than having some kind of exposure. Does an office, uh, does it definitely prevent sleeping in your office? Or can't. I follow through to my office door, but you're.
When it comes to building, when it comes to builder, building fire and safety codes, an office is, 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 is looked at differently. An office doesn't have, have to have egress. A office doesn't have to have a smoke detector, because if you're in an office, you're supposed to be alert, except for some people might fall asleep. But when you're in an office, you're supposed, you're supposed to be up and alert. So if there was an emergency or a fire or, uh, whatever, you're not asleep.
Then you wouldn't be able to sleep in an office, it would be.
It would be prohibited to have, to sleep in an office, correct. When we have our floor plan stamped by engineers to designate the use of rooms, bedrooms are designated and offices at playrooms and studies and whatever, because the only rooms that we then look at for egress, fire code are the, are the sleeping quarters, because that's where people are asleep, where tragedies can happen, fires can start, you have to be made aware, get up, get out, uh.
And you don't have any other people being bothered.
Yeah.
So three and four, one is a first interpretation and four is asking to concede. So of course the interpretation, it was found that there's nothing to do with that.
I keep letting these people in, in constantly, say people. We need to, to, do we vote on interpretation or just explain our, how we feel about the.
Typically, the law comes with reading. But I think it seems like there's still a lot of questions. So I mean, there's nothing wrong, there's particularly full of misbearings to pick this out for more to, to get on the definitions for the board to grab its head around the exact thing. When I read this, can you tell us, because it's just very unfair by this application, do you believe it's that the garage, unattached, the bedrooms and the bathroom, it's a dwelling, but it doesn't really say whether you're trying to say it isn't a dwelling unit or.
That could be a question for a guy who's also at a team time, this board denies it. So the board just denies the petition that way. So that's why the application who have patients in one really, say, um, what do I personally believe? I don't know, but, but the, the way I understand the code, whether it's right, whether it's written a good way or not, it's not something to decide, where I, the code is that it that it is gonna be considered accessory shop. And this, like, it's still be considered accessory shop.
You're interpreting it essentially that bedrooms and in a detached garage would be an accessory use to the house, is what.
Yeah, personally, I agree with that.
Okay, well, that's why codes are open to interpretation too. I mean, yes, people do, people do interpretate the codes differently. So.
And it's an accessory structure, they do not need, it, it's an accessory dwelling unit, they definitely. It's an accessory structure, my understanding, don't.
accessory dwelling unit would need a use variance.
Yeah, so then, yeah, I, sorry, I was under the impression that our conversation was saying that, that like a detached garage with these bedrooms was an accessory dwelling unit. That's what, that's what I, that's what I.
Okay, yeah.
Yes.
No, yes, this one is, is it a dwelling unit or is it, or does a dwelling unit fit this specific garage unit or do the, that's the structure or neither of those fit in a vast we have here.
I think like then it's down for interpretation to say what's cooking, because you could plug in a, you could plug in a kettle, you could plug in, right now, people don't even use their stove without, like we have the air fryer, the toaster, the microwave, the bedded rock. The induction, yeah, the immersion one, like, you don't need a stove.
So we can't, as far as I'm concerned, we can't, we can't consider it an accessory dwelling unit without a variance. In, in other words, if it, if it's considered an accessory dwelling unit, it's gonna need a variance. If the board was to say that they interpret that two bedrooms and a bathroom in a detached structure fits the, fits the description of an accessory structure in our code, then he would just need a building permit to renovate.
Alright.
So. Well, no, that he's asking, he's essentially asking the board, he's asking the board to, to, to see if you're, if you're, if you're.
About second is to, are we gonna pass a motion to say, uh, what in fact we are interpreting this as? Okay, so I'll make a motion. If we're ready for this. I want to vote. That, that's the definition, that an accessory structure does not include dwellers, beds or that. It isn't, it is, in other words, it's an accessory.
So the interpretation of the board is accessory structures does not, okay.
So, okay, I believe that that is our interpretation for making a decision on this.
Okay.
So why?
I second.
Okay, now we're all. I think it's, that literally is simply by the detachments. And then you don't need, uh, the, 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 you're, you're now asking for very high, uh, you're presenting the situation. Then you have, you, you're.
You're you're now asking for very high, you're presented this situation, then you have, you're forced, you're forced to. You know, come up with an argument. So there's a better way of doing it, but it needs the law.
But right now, we just need to focus on if if Scott's interpretation, if the board agrees or disagrees on it. Because because then that then that'll lead us to the next section of the.
So I have a motion saying that accessory structure is something that does not have any sleeping or bathroom.
We didn't have that.
Yes, we didn't have that.
So.
That's the definition of accessory. The definition of accessory structure is that it has, it is used either like a garage or a store. And therefore, there's no living or food.
Yeah, leave the bathrooms out, because we do have bathrooms allowed in accessory dwellings, garages, there's other uses where where accessory buildings would allow or.
So we don't have to. Take that off.
So, okay.
So I all in.
Okay, I'll go there.
Now it's a accessory dwelling.
Yeah, so well, dwelling unit would be the, so he asked for two separate. Um, interpretation, so the first one, accessory structure, the second one was. Does this fit into a dwelling unit? So that goes to the discussions, you know, on kitchens and it was a hot pot enough to have something like that, does that.
I motion say that dwelling unit has more to do, that has to do with having beds and places where someone could have a residence. Like could could be sleeping every day.
So you can plant yourself and you know.
Yeah.
For a. Well, in fact, again, it's just, you move to the definition of. If we're ready, stay, does not include bedrooms and bathrooms. So in fact, this is moved, this request could be already defined. Right, so we can vote again, vote this, you know, based on, is that, is that.
We have to define the accessory dwelling part of it to say that if it is a dwelling unit, then.
I'm saying it is not, and why do you keep, why do you keep trying to edit that difference, it's not.
We we're saying that if there was to be attached garage with two bedrooms and a bathroom, that would make it an accessory dwelling. Because otherwise. Structure and therefore.
Well, you couldn't have any dwelling or living area, because it's not, it's not connected to the principal building, which is, which is only one residence, not two. One residence. And you can connect it.
I think we're agreeing with you separately.
We're moving the possibility of the accessory units. To have being anything for habitation.
Yeah. So we're saying that even if there was not a stove. In a separated building where there were bedrooms and a bathroom, it would still qualify as an accessory dwelling. Because there is the capacity for cooking, for living, for sanitary.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right now.
They want to transform it into an accessory dwelling unit, or say that we fear that this would become an accessory dwelling unit if connected.
So accessory dwelling unit. Is bed. Even if it doesn't have, but that's a matter of, right, so you could cook, that's what I would say, cooking is, well, cooking means, I don't think it says that still. With your fire, but we can, we can look at the dictionary.
Technically, you can't cook in a bathroom either, but never know if someone did.
Essentially, they're considered, they're essentially, I think the board is saying that this is considered. Even though, even though it doesn't include a kitchen, it's still going to be an ADU, essentially falls under the criteria of an ADU, accessory dwelling unit. Which isn't allowed yet in the town of Fallsburg zone, or or pretty much all of New York State. And, uh, you know, for sleeping, so it's going to need a, it's, we're going to have to go to the next step and and go for the use variance if you'd like to do, if you'd like to.
So for the record, cocaine, so we're looking at cocaine, it's the act of preparing food for eating, especially by eating, but not necessarily. So it's just the act of preparing food, and that's guaranteed in Webster dictionary. So it's, you know, I would think of like a college form.
Yeah.
Where you've got like your microwave or like a pop pot on top of it. You know, kind of that, you're right. Process of cooking, like it's, oh, you're, you're eating that and cheese and air, it's a dog.
But that's expanded, that's expanded.
That's that's too general.
I motion to say that that accessory dwelling unit does not. I motion to to define that an accessory dwelling unit does not mean to have a kitchen, completely as sort of a power for the preparation of.
I second.
On.
Well, it was more. Why do you want to do that? Provide that.
Sorry, no, what I'm saying is, I'm saying no. As long as there's electricity, there's a pump over cooking, and therefore something with beds and bathrooms could be an accessory dwelling. That's what I'm saying.
And that goes back to. One or more rooms with provisions for living, sanitary.
So we're definitely an accessory dwelling unit. That's what I'm saying, it definitely is one of the, it is, it's one or more rooms with provisions for living. So they can sleep, cooking, they can plug something in, because it's going to be electricity, sanitary, there's going to be that, sleeping. That is what this is.
I think we can move on.
Oh, hello.
No, one is an accessory.
So we voted on accessory structure the first time, this is for dwelling.
So the chairman has to meet the. That comes under discussion.
So what is your question? I've heard so many different definitions.
The way my my motion is to find an accessory dwelling unit as a place with beds. Bathroom and an electricity source that would, that would allow the use of any sort of cooking, it doesn't necessarily. To have a kitchen for it to be defined as an accessory dwelling. So I motion.
One day, okay. Yeah, there's a lot of pieces to that.
Yeah.
Essentially, what we're trying to get at, I think, is it's not going to qualify as an accessory, according to code. And it 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 does qualify where potentially could be a second dwelling unit for the property. In other words, somebody could, somebody could potentially, the owner could, the owner could potentially rent it out to somebody. They can live in there and put a toaster in there and then and live in there. So then it becomes, then it becomes too fit that unless it's connected to the house, yes, this is, this is why we're going to need the the use variance to allow. This this bedroom potential ADU to be a separate dwelling from the house. So, well, he he's here to, he's here to represent that.
Yes, that's the.
And we can discuss merit of the application before we open it, like for this to me is not an application that answers any questions that we would need for experience. We don't have any, like bothersome, it's not a vital, so here they can work off of.
Maybe they're facing and one of their dirty habits that's done also, I'm sure. I don't, if that's a part of the.
And really that was the actual financial information that we need, if it's going to be, if if there is a.
So would you say that this information would actually be considered this?
Exactly.
So we could table this. Until around the next agenda. I don't use it. I don't know if anyone has opened for public hearing. Cause everyone wants to put input in, but again, you could open it just that way, public had a chance to file. It's amended further down in its financial.
I mean, I don't know.
What are we looking at?
This is not within, it's not within three hundred feet of accounting, it's on a tally. No, no, two thirty nine. Sure. Oh, wait, somebody raised their hand, hold on one second. I'm going to click on you, whoever P A is, hold on a second, I'm going to ask you to unmute. Now I'm going to.
Hello there.
There you go, you're on live.
Okay, my name is Abraham Ackerman, um, I just figured out how to raise my hand. I was actually, um, taking part, you know, watching tonight for the Riverside item. I am the Riverside dweller. And I I just, I just wanted to understand something, so if you want to come back to that later, I could do that. I just wasn't sure if you were wrapping up for the night.
Uh. Yeah, let's, 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 let's finish this one up and I'll, we'll come back to you. We'll come back to you, we'll come back to you before we leave tonight, okay?
Understood.
We're almost done here, all right? Now that I know that you're there, so, all right? Just, just mute, I'll mute you back and I'll grab you in a little bit, all right? Thank you, sir. Anybody else would like to talk about the three fifty three Laurel Avenue, please raise your hand.
I have quite a speed prepared before I listen to all this exchange that has to do with the definition onward. So in the interest of time for everybody to be spending time here, and to help Gray and his department. I'm just waiting for an attorney. Between now and the next time this comes up, I would suggest that you, Mr. Chairman, ask the town attorney to work with Gray to define. The words we've been trying to define ourselves using Webster's dictionary and whatever else. That way, when this gentleman or any other gentleman runs across, they want to turn into a bedroom. We're going to be able to answer that by saying we've already got an answer. You either need it this way or you don't qualify. Because. I didn't graduate from M I T, but I already figured out with whatever definition you choose, if they wanted, simply doesn't qualify. So to simplify things in the future, maybe we ought to use the resources that we have. Thank you.
I think between me and Dylan, we thought the interpret, the the code defined it pretty clearly already, I mean. I mean. Yes, so.
Okay. All right. So this is going to have to be kept open. Uh, so the public here is and also. May, yes, well, you know, clear it, Chris. And then part of it too is, is you talk about the application, you want to see more information on that application. So that would be for best interest to do that. All right, so then, you know, we have, now we're going to go back to.
No, hold on a second, are we going to talk about the two thirty nine, for, I mean, are we not discussing the use variance, that we're not going to start it, or?
We introduced.
Okay. Just, just to, just. The, the, uh, the reasons for the request he filled out, we already had that they're not sufficient, I mean. In other words, they they need better, uh. Because it's costly and bothersome, it's not really a good definition, yours, you have to financially. The, in order to, 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 to. Okay.
So.
All right. Okay. Okay.
You know, the people that are being going.
Okay.
Yeah, so I think you had an individual that was trying to talk about Riverside projects, so I. Going back and sticking with this chance to, if the board agrees, of course.
All right, I'm going to unmute you, ask you to unmute again, sir.
Yes, hello, everyone.
I guess say your, say your name again for the board, please.
Abraham Ackerman. I am, I am the dweller of that, of the unit under discussion of subject unit Riverside. Um, I appreciate everyone's diligence and serious consideration of this application. This is seri, you're taking this very seriously and I appreciate that. Could I just understand, I I don't mean, just in a tough way, it was, why wasn't not voted on tonight? I just want to understand. Because I I I just have to mention that, um, the town attorney is virtually, you can't, unable to be heard by Zoom and, um.
Let me try, let me try something. Hold on one second.
And also the two board members closest to to Moshe are also. Very, you know, unintelligible on the Zoom.
I just tried a different speaker setup, does that make any difference?
Well.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, sorry about that. So the, uh, your property is within five hundred feet of a state or county road, so under general municipal law, section two thirty nine. I believe it's section L, um, the county has to receive notice so they can review the application. And, you know, they'll make a determination on whether it's a local determination for this board to make. Or whether they're denying it, if they deny it, that means this board can still vote on it, they would just need a super majority to override. Uh, and the county has thirty days in which to respond. Um, so if they don't respond within thirty days, then it's deemed that they've accepted it and they're not denying the application, so that was.
So were they given notice? Was the county given notice?
So, no, we didn't realize till the lawyer, the attorney brought up tonight that it has to be, it has to go before the two thirty nine. Uh, none of us caught that it was, that it was next to the county road. We didn't realize that, uh, it was within three hundred feet of the county road.
Um.
In other words, we were, we, we, uh, we, we weren't, uh, it kind of threw us off guard or whatever, we, we, we overlooked the, uh, that it was within two hundred and thirty nine feet of the. Or three hundred feet of the county road, but normally when that happens, uh, they can't file the two thirty nine until after they have the first meeting with the planning, with the zoning board.
Yeah, similarly, the zoning or planning board would be the one that recommends or asks for the two thirty nine to provide it. And that's just typically how it's going.
Understood, does, does, I think section two thirty nine, um, allows for for municipalities and and counties. To limit the types of applications that requires such notification? Has there ever, has that ever been discussed with the county? Like whether to limit it to, to, to use variances only?
No, I mean, it's a, it's a state law, so it applies to use area variances, planning board applications, site plan approval.
No, I, without, without specific discussion between municipalities and the county, I I agree, it would, it would apply to everything. But it it allows for counties and municipalities to have understandings that certain, um. Certain ones wouldn't need to be referred, I mean, I, the state law, I believe. Certain ones wouldn't need to be referred, I, I mean, I, the state law, I believe specifies that, but evidently, okay. That never did happen, okay, um. And now my understanding is, is that this section hadn't been, um. In practice. Until today's hearing, i- is that the case?
No, no.
No. Yes. Two thirty nine is the board will, the board will call for two thirty nine if it's required at the meeting. So we didn't realize till we got here tonight that it was required, that's why we pushed for the, we normally, we, we were.
Okay, so hold on, I, I see the board members are leaving, one last effort. The county can respond a day after they receive it, and if they respond, that they're okay with everything, day after they receive it. The board would have the right to vote. I, I, I mean, is there any way that the board could vote, could, could, the board could vote tonight conditionally?
I would say no, no, and in fact, it doesn't, you know, the issue is not. The only way we could see it is once we get that application back from the county. Whether they agree with it or not, it really is irrelevant because we can override it with a super.
Understood, understood, no, right, right, and, and if they did nothing for thirty days.
If you have any other good questions, I think, you know, this is just going to wait to the next meeting. We will make sure that we get the technology correct so you can participate, we're sorry for that part. But I, I, I don't think we're going to, we're not going to vote on this. It doesn't matter, it's not going to happen, we will have to talk about it next.
Uh, now I understand that, understood, I appreciate that, thank you.
Abraham, I mean, essentially, essentially. We're going to allow you to keep constructing your building except for that last corner, I mean, uh. You can continue on with the renovations inside your structure, everything else except for that one corner piece, I know it's an inconvenience. But it has to follow through the proper channels in order to be legal, I know it's a.
Right, no, I, I appreciate that, and inconvenienced, I, I'll, I'll take all the inconvenience that, you know. My, 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 my concern is, is that I have to make a decision if it's worth it for me to continue. Because nothing's guaranteeing the, the variance being, the variance grant being requested, I, I have to know. Because if I just corner off that room, it, it makes that room too small for a dining room. So I have to make a financial, you know, it, it, it's a, it's a decision for me. I appreciate the fact that, you know, I appreciate the fact that you're allowing me to continue up until, you know, that area in question, but. That's, that's why I was, uh, being a little pushy. But I.
No, we, we understand, I understand, I tried to, so we, we, uh, we were going to start, uh, not having our public. From, from now on, moving forward, we're not going to be holding our public hearings the same night as our zoning board meetings. We made the exception for this month to hold the public hearings for the last time, the same night as the hearings. To try to get your, your case and a couple other ones through, uh, you know, to, to maybe to a vote tonight. But other things came up at the meeting that didn't allow us to.
I mean, would, 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 I, I don't know when you're able to give this, you know, whatever it is, four twenty nine notification.
Two thirty nine.
Two thirty nine.
This meeting is over, the next meeting is in a month.
Moish, Moish can follow, Moish, Moish will follow, did I lose you? Uh, where'd you go? Well, you lost.
I don't, I don't know what just happened there, yeah.
Moish can, Moish, Moish can follow the two thirty nine first thing tomorrow morning.
Okay, my, my question is, is the, is the next, my question is, is the next hearing of zoning board hearing.
It's a month from tonight.
Thirty days, but is that more or less than thirty days?
May twenty third.
You'll, you'll be, it's over thirty days.
Sure, be on the next agenda.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, just to kind of. I think the board overall was positive towards this, so I mean, certainly that's not a vote or anything, but I mean, for the discussion. I think we can believe that the board does, you know, see some. Potential for approval on this, certainly there's more that needs to be done, and we need to see what the county says, but I, I think it was an overall positive reaction. You know, just, I, I think that's the, the most I can say or we can say until we get the two thirty nine back and, you know, we'll formal through.
Okay, no, uh, that gives me comfort because unfortunately I, I couldn't hear many of the board members clearly during the, uh. During the discussion, okay. Okay, thank you all.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.